Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, July 3rd, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence and then to pledge. Pledge.
(Inaudible)
Last month, on the 22nd, we had a little fair at the David R. Schechter Center to honor David Schechter for his years of service here. And we didn't do it officially at a council meeting, and we really wanted to do it here at the meeting tonight. So, it's a proclamation. We'll read a couple things, and then I'll have David come up. It says, "In our lifetime, there are few people that impact their family, church, and community in a way that makes all of us better, and a community a better place for generations to come. We are here tonight to honor such a person." Person, excuse me. Mayor Percy Hedgecock was the founder of our city, but David R. Schechter was the person who kept us together. In good times and bad, he was the glue and our guiding light. So, on behalf of the City Council, city staff, and the City of Satellite Beach, we are honoring you from this day forward as mayor emeritus. Thank you for your tremendous contribution to our city and always being here for us. So, Dave, if you would please come up, our mayor, and Mark, will you please read the proclamation?
Come on up. Whereas David R. Schechter has served our nation for more than 30 years at the Kennedy Space Center, beginning with the NASA Atlas Centaur Rocket Program supporting the Apollo moon landing, and whereas David Schechter has served our community for 37 years guiding the transformation of our city and the betterment of our community. During his 15 years on City Council, three years as councilman and 12 years as mayor, our city acquired a new fire station, police station, city hall, and abandoned strip mall, which was converted to our new recreation department, teen zone, and community center. And ambitious environmental progress projects were also completed, including Sampson's Island Nature Park and 34 acres of our oceanfront parks. During his additional 22 years of volunteer service, David R. Schechter has provided leadership to numerous city boards and to the local youth, civic, military business, charitable school, church, and municipal government organizations. And whereas David R. Schechter's conciliatory manner has greatly enhanced our city's reputation, routinely secured the cooperation of other jurisdictions to benefit our city, and resulted in Brevard County donations of land, structures, and funds to create a 35-acre sports and recreation park and an oceanfront clubhouse and other recreation facilities. Whereas their 2017 Alumni Achievement Award, Rollins College has recognized David R. Schechter for his very exemplary life. Now, therefore, Mayor Frank Catino of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim David R. Schechter to be mayor emeritus of the City of Satellite Beach in recognition of his many years of service and leadership and continuing participation in city government and local youth activities. Congratulations, sir.
(Applause). We got the date right this time, so it's not 18 something. So, thank you very much for everything.
A lot of things have happened since 1885. And also, Ruth, thank you very much for allowing us to... Thank you very much. It's honored to be here. You know, one person does do all that stuff. Volunteers and staff. And thank you for that support. And also, Ruth, thank you very much for allowing us to...
(Inaudible).
Thank you very much. At this time, open up the floor for citizens' comments. Now, this is for non-agenda items. So, if it's an agenda item, you'll have more enough time to speak during that agenda item. Non-agenda items, I take citizens of Satellite Beach first, and then I'll speak. Have the mics open for anybody. So, this is for non-agenda items, for people living in Satellite Beach to start. Please.
My apologies, this is on the agenda, but the staff is still online.
Okay.
My name is...
No, no, just the mic, so, sorry.
There you go. Thank you. Hi, my name is Schechter Witsky, and I live on Cinnamon Drive. I come to you as one of many residents and parents concerned with the current recirculation of the cancer cluster phenomenon. It is my hope that you are elected officials to help guide us through the situation that is causing illness and death in our community. There's a lot of information out there, as well as a lot of speculation for the reason, and some unknown altered documents. I've come with the information we have printed, as well as the sources of this information. We are pleased to hear the testing of tap water at 13 of the beachside schools. However, it leaves us with many questions we hope you can answer in the near future. Who is doing the testing? How are they doing the testing? What are they testing for? And is there a plan in place to continue testing groundwater and soil? The need for detailed answers is very important because many of the different stories, facts, if you will, that we have been given includes, but is not limited to, being told that water and soil is tested every year at one school, to telling us that there's knowledge of no testing has occurred in the past 28 years at another school. We have been told to contact Environmental Services, and they have different answers as well. In fact, we question if the schools are tested every year, and city hall is one of the testing sites, how does that make sense? It is overwhelming for the families affected to deal with this, and they're looking to you, our leaders, to lead us through this and give us the correct information. We have an army of residents willing to help. We would like answers and swift corrections, whatever they are and whatever they cost.
Thank you, sir. Let me continue letting people speak. This is an action item on our agenda. It is under our city manager's report. So, if your questions don't get answered during that, since it's an action item, I call for citizens' comments. So, just, I think you'll...Courtney is going to explain everything that we know at this time.
That's why I didn't...
Yeah, no problem at all.
...do this with anybody?
If you would, please leave it with the...
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
See, Courtney?
Thank you.
Thank you. And it'll be, it's on our act, it's an action item under her report.
Pass that down, just so I can see if it's something we don't have.
So, the podium is still open for non-agenda items. Here, none of close the citizens' comment portion. And city council comments.
Not really much to speak about, but we do, I want to remind everybody, small business owners in the area, it doesn't have to just be for Satellite Beach, but we do every, what is it, the third Thursday of the month, we have a happy hour, commercial conversations at Whiskey Beach Pub. And I would just like to invite any entrepreneurs, business people, please come out. I've seen some of you guys out there. The city, we just want to discuss with you different things that we can do for the community and for our business owners to help make it a better place for you to do business and just get the attendance. You can meet some good people, have some good conversation, and that's it. It's been pretty well attended so far, but it would be nice to see some more people come out, so.
What was that date?
It's like the Thursday of every month. Am I right on that, right? Third Thursday?
Third Thursday of every month.
Third Thursday. So, it'll be the 19th.
Thanks. That's it. Happy Fourth of July.
The only thing that I have is, I spent last week in the Outer Banks, and I wanted to bring greetings from our former Assistant City Manager, Andy Stewart, to let the residents of Satellite Beach know that he was doing well, he was missing all of us, and that he's hoping to get back to visit at some point in time. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Suzanne?
I am going to say one thing, and it's really directed to council, if I may. We all are liaisons to particular boards. And I want to make sure that the podium is always open, and it's a neutral and safe zone, that no matter what side or your opinion, that you feel free and are comfortable enough to come up here and to speak. And in no way should you be deterred for coming up here because of your point of view. And I would like you to pass that on to members of the committees that you sit on, okay? I've heard some instances in the last week or so that, I don't think our residents or people really need to be treated like that. We all need to be on the same playing field. So, if you would, please pass on to the boards you sit, okay? And happy Fourth to everybody. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, City Attorney's Report.
There's nothing.
Thank you. Courtney, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. On July, Tuesday, July 24th, city staff and council will be holding a public meeting to talk about growth and development in the city. That meeting will be held at the David R. Schechter Community Center at 6:30. And we will be taping that and posting that to, or videotaping that and posting that to our YouTube channel. We are, we're really doing this to begin to tackle some of the misinformation being perpetuated on social media regarding some of the recent development approvals of the city. Actually, when I say recent development approvals, that were done 15 years ago. And just to get out the correct information, I know it's election time, and sometimes people use these issues to, to drive their issues on the, on the election platform, but at this point, it's gotten a little out of hand, so we want to get the correct information out. And that's the, that's the venue that we're going to use to do that. We're also going to be sending out a postcard to each resident in the city informing of them, of that workshop, and we'll be posting everything on social media to get the word out. I received a thank you letter from Linda Snyder, a new business owner in Satellite Beach, thanking the community development department, and that's in your packet. I also received a thank you letter from our mayor emeritus, David Schechter, for honoring him as mayor emeritus. And also, the city received a distinguished budget award from the Government Finance Officers' Association for fiscal year 17, 18, for the fifth consecutive year. It's, you know, I know it's like old news now, but it's...
Great job.
But, so we did get that award. And I have two action items. We'll get the first one out of the way, or we'll take the second one. The, due to schedule conflicts and an effort to ensure all of you are at the meeting where we're setting the tentative mileage rate, we would like to move the special meeting we usually hold for you to do that, which we had originally scheduled on the 26th. We would like to move that to July 25th. We've already checked with the sustainability board, and they can, they'll be happy to move their meeting. So, if that's okay with all of you, we'll begin advertising that. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, because Courtney, it's an action item, open up public comment on moving our meeting from the 26th to the 25th of July. Floor is open. Here and none. Back to council, council. Can you turn it? Thank you.
I already had it in my...
Yeah, I did too.
Did we talk about this?
I think you did, yeah. We polled all of you, but we had to do it publicly, so. Okay, so, the other item is, many of, all of you are aware of the, the testing that staff would like to do, and this is for the PFOA and PFOS. These are chemicals that were used by the Patrick Air Force Base and the bases all over the nation in, for fire suppression purposes and aviation fires. We would like to test, a report came out, it was published by the Military Times, it was shared through social media, and a lot of residents called us and sent us emails about concerns of whether this chemical existed off the base. All the testing that was done for Patrick Air Force Base was done on base. So, to really fill in that gap and address those fears, we thought it would be good to go ahead and test those, to test certain sites in the city and also outside of the city. It's kind of grown in terms of popularity, I guess, or attention, and it's also grown in that we've been able to now start coordinating with the county, as well as, and I know the city of Cocoa Beach is looking at testing their side, and then also Brevard Public Schools is now testing the water coming out of the tap in their schools. We are only doing this out of an abundance of caution, and we don't have any reason to believe that, that there is a problem, but we want to make sure that we give our residents that peace of mind. So, what we'd like to do is test, we would like to dig three shallow wells, and one will be at city hall, one will be on Jackson Avenue in a property that we own near Satellite High School, and another one will be at Sea Park, Park in the South Patrick Shores area, and we've received permission from the county to do, to do that, and we're coordinating with them. We believe that if we can go ahead and get this testing done, if, if, if something does show up, then we will then start asking other agencies to get involved on the state and federal level. But right now, it's really more of an exploratory testing to make sure that nothing is there and to address residents' concerns. We have been contacted by DEP, as well as Senator Mayfield, and she's offered assistance if anything comes back, to make sure that we have that, that support on the state and federal level. We also have been contacting the Patrick Air Force Base and making sure they understand what we're doing. And just to let you know, they do have, the fact that they have these sites on Patrick Air Force Base has been well-known, they've always disclosed that. There is a committee that all the communities have been participating in for a very long time. John Fergus has been participating on that committee for us in the City of Satellite Beach, and it basically guides all the remediation efforts and restoration efforts on the base that's been happening for the past 20 years. So, that is all out there. That information is out there. The information that you passed out to me, we all have that, all that information, so thank you, though. And, and don't assume that we have it, so always give it to us, because we may not have it, so thank you for, for bringing that. But we do, we are aware of the concerns of the community. I just want to make sure that people understand that no cancer cluster has ever been established at this point. No problem has been identified at this point, that we're in the process of trying to, that Dr. Greenwald is trying to find that problem, and there's a lot of volunteers that are looking into it, but as, as of yet, there has been no cancer cluster that's been identified. So, I just want to make sure people are aware of that. But we are here as a city and staff, I know the council's very supportive, but the city is here to always support. If we do find anything like that, we will, we'll definitely be there to push and make sure that the right thing is done, that the correct testing is done. I can say right now that regardless of what testing we're going to do, there, there won't be enough. I can tell you that right now. There, there already, you can see the questions of whether the schools are enough, if they're doing it enough. So, I encourage the community to let us do this preliminary exploratory testing first, and if something comes out of that, then we will continue testing more detail in more areas, but until then, you know, allow this process to play out first, before we start demanding more tests. They're very expensive, as you can see, this is a $9,000 budget request for three tests. The good thing is about the wells that we're digging, we will, we will be making them permanent, and they will be used in the future for lagoon monitoring wells, which we needed anyway. As you know, a lot of the sewer discharges happen at Sea Park, so we're very interested in seeing that monitoring happen on the county and looking inside, so.
Courtney, thank you very much. Let me open it up for public comment, and then back to council. At this time, open up for public comment on this action item. If any other questions concerning what we are proposing, we're going to do as a city for the time being.
And I'm, I'm part of all those Facebook groups, you know, that's occurring, and I'm in constant contact with the school board member, our school board member, Board Member Duskovich on this issue, so I just want to let you all know that we're all communicating, the county is now involved, their natural resources department is involved, so we're all making sure that we're communicating and we're, you know, making sure that, I just don't want the community to think that we're not paying attention to it, because all of us are definitely paying attention to it.
Again, public comments open on this agenda item, if anyone has anything else they'd like to add. Okay, here and no further public comment. Bring it back to council. Mark?
Yeah, I did have a, I have done quite a bit of reading on this here recently, and I think that, and I met with Courtney, and I do support less checking, without a doubt. That's, I'll say that upfront. I think, but my concern, and I, I think Courtney has said it, that if there's anything found, any, whatever, it's way beyond the scope of our city to handle that, and it has to go to the next levels above that. So, it's not something that our council can do other than support the process, but we as a city...
Right.
Have no capability of taking that issue on.
And I, and the reason why...
That is true, correct, though, right?
Yes, and that, that's correct. If, if anything came back, then we would immediately have to start meeting with, you know, the Congressman Posey's office, Senator Mayfield's office, and also, you know, members of DEP, the Health Department, and so on, and as well as Patrick Air Force Base. But I didn't want to involve that, those groups at this point, because we don't know if there's a problem. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, I think we need to establish a problem before we begin involving everyone else.
I'll say that I have to applaud that, that you're starting here rather than going higher and trying to work backwards. I think that's very innovative to do that. I think that's a good thing, but just as long as, I can see the direction we're going, but I applaud what you're doing, starting at this point.
I, I agree with Mark. I think, you know, we're moving in the right direction. Do we have any idea when the wells are going to be in place and when we can start looking at some results from those testing?
They'll be, they believe the report will be done by the end of the month.
Okay. And it'll be sampling in the next week, in July.
And I, I think, you know, getting in touch with Patrick Avon at Congressman Posey's office, when we get those results is probably a positive thing to do, because I know that he would want to be involved in whatever, you know, we need to be doing here.
I also just briefly wanted to explain why we can't test irrigation wells, and we have to dig our own wells, because the, the type of chemical that we're talking about can also, is also shown up, can be, show up in anything that has Teflon or anything like that. So, if an irrigation well was built with any of those materials, a false positive could come up. So, to keep the sample as clean as possible, we thought it would be better to dig the well ourselves and control that process to make sure that we have the cleanest and best sample possible, because I think it would be incredibly frightening to people to release a false positive test. So, we declined. I know a lot of people are calling us, saying, "Hey, test my well." But the problem is, we don't know how that well is built, and we don't know what's in the well and what type of materials were used in, in that construction of that well. So, it would be better for us to dig our own. And that was on the advice of the lab that we're using.
Okay.
I just say, you know, I've had a, a few people ask about this, and obviously, as many, I've been here a long time, I remember we went through this with the whole Hodgkin's disease and stuff. But I always try to remind everybody is, I know people consider Satellite Beach everything from Pineda Causeway to O'Gallie Causeway. But when you talk about what the city can do relies within the city limits of the City of Satellite Beach. So, we are kind of restricted to that point, but that's when we work with the county, stuff like that, because a lot of this, from the Hodgkin's part, was actually South Patrick Shore. It was all a part that was from South Housing to Pineda that was taking place. I don't think a lot of people remember all those specifics of that timeframe and that was going on, but I just try to remind everybody, I think as a city, I echo everybody else, I think we're doing what, what we can do within the city's purview of what we're allowed to do. And the best we can do is, again, talk with the county and other folks, because there's a lot of space between us and Patrick that doesn't belong to the actual city limits of Satellite Beach, but we'll definitely work with the county and the school board and everybody else to try to take part in all that. But I just try to remind everybody, we are a little bit limited. And like I said, I know everybody always says Satellite Beach, and everything seems from Pineda to O'Gallie Causeway gets considered as Satellite Beach, but we all know that's not necessarily true.
But also, we are doing a well up there...
Right.
...in that area, so that we can help the citizens up there also. And also, we have a very good working relationship with the general, who is at the base, very good. And so, I, I'm anxious to see what the test does, so that we can, we know what to do from here on out.
I'll make a motion to approve the unbudgeted expense in the amount of $9,000 that retroactively has started.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, just because we have people in the audience here that came on this, so possibly we'll have an answer for our August 1st meeting.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we should have the report by then. And, and please know that the minute we get it, we're going to release it, so that...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Any further report, Courtney?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Number Eight, Discuss Take Action on Automatic Renewal of Interlocal Corporate Agreement. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is basically just a way to assist the county in using our population to be able to get a larger CDBG allocation for the federal government to help with affordable housing countywide. None of our census blocks over here qualify for that type of funding, but what we can do is participate in the population and have an interlocal agreement. Basically, what it does is it hands over the affordable housing actions to the county and basically delegates that responsibility over to the county. So, every, I think we have a three-year term. Every three years, we sign this agreement with them and basically delegate that authority to them, so that's what this agreement's for.
Okay, great, thank you. Discussion from council.
I'll make a motion to approve the city's continued participation in the CDBG Urban County Program for Fiscal Years 2019 through 2021 under the current agreement's automatic renewal clause.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Councilman Osmer. Discussion from council. Here and none. At this time, open up Agenda Item Eight for public comment. Here and none. Close the public comment portion. Counsel, any further? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Discuss the City's Budget, and this is for information purposes only.
And I'm going to, Suzanne and Brittany, you're going to come up, but just while they're coming up, this is basically a presentation of our citizen budget committee recommendations, as well as the status of where we are at in budget preparation processes, and if, and going over the five-year financial forecast with you. I'm going to just hand it over. Are you guys ready? Okay.
Courtney, just, just since we're talking about the Citizens Budget Committee, can you just, for the record, just briefly explain what that is, how we got to that?
So, every year since I've been here, this is my fifth, sixth budget, no, it's my fifth, because it's the fifth ward. We, we usually put together a staff advisory committee, and the purpose of that is to get the staff involved in the budget that normally wouldn't be. So, mostly, it's directors that put together the budget with us. So, we would, we would put lower-level staff on the budget advisory committee to, it's basically a way to get them more involved and more enlightened as to the challenges, honestly. This year, because of the challenges that we have with, with the drastic reduction in revenue from the impending homestead exemption, as well as the issue of reserves needing to be added to because of the hurricane, two hurricanes in one fiscal year, as well as the infrastructure challenges we're facing, we felt it would be better, instead of a staff advisory committee, to have a citizen budget advisory committee that would look at the budget from a completely different, fresh-eyed standpoint, and see if there's ways to increase revenues or decrease services, basically cut costs, or find any other way to, to address the shortfalls that we're facing in the next two or three budget years. So, we, you appointed that team, you expanded our recommendation from a five-person to a seven-person team. They are here tonight to present you with their findings and their majority motions, as well as the minority motion. And then, we are going to present the, the numbers, basically, of what that would look like. like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just in brief, I'm going to kind of go through, actually, I forgot my clicker. So Courtney kind of teed up a little bit of the intro. Before I get started, though, I wanted to recognize the members of our citizen budget committee who are in the audience tonight and who will be participating in this presentation. If you guys could just stand up for me real quick, just so everyone can see you and wave. So just wanted to say publicly how much we appreciate your work. Thank you, I, we'll be doing our presentation here momentarily, but we really appreciate everything you did for us on this committee. So in the audience tonight, we have members, including our vice chair, Kevin Recker, Cindy Berger, Andrew Schler, Larry Whitney, and Millie Sims. Those who could not be with us tonight because they had prior engagements and obligations were our chair, Jeff Chastain, as well as member Desiree Call. So Courtney mentioned the initial challenge, and I'll say some of this for the audience and those who may not have been a part of some of the earlier conversation, but the initial challenge that the committee was going to be faced with, and the reason we decided to create this committee, as you recall, is that the state legislature has decided to put on the November 6, 2018 ballot, an option for voters to consider an additional $25,000 homestead exemption. Currently, folks who are in their, living in their homes can get two $25,000 homestead exemptions for a total of $50,000. The third would give them an additional $75,000, essentially a reduction in the value of their home that would be taxed. So if approved this November by a majority of voters in the state, what would happen is, in the fiscal year 1920 budget, the city's revenues would, in a moment, decrease by $600,000, and that decrease would be with us for all the subsequent years. So the question that the committee was faced with initially was, how do we close that gap in, in the revenue that is likely to occur? In addition to that, there are other things that we presented as staff to the budget committee for consideration that are, that are pieces of, of the financial picture of the city at this moment in time. Courtney mentioned the two hurricanes, one fiscal year. The impact of that from fiscal year 1617 is that we started this current budget year 1718 with reserves of only $545,000, which is not a recommended or a comfortable place to be. The recommendation for a basic base minimum reserve balance is 15% of your operating, annual operating costs, and for us, that number would have been like 1.5 million, not 545,000. So that was a, an issue that we really wanted to overcome. We've obviously submitted to FEMA for reimbursement on the cost of the hurricanes, but they are extremely excruciatingly slow in sending any kind of reimbursement back, so that's still something that's dragging on. Other things that we presented to the budget committee included information about where we're at on funding, our capital assets, and infrastructure needs. So we, we recognize we have a lot of needs for roads and sidewalks, and whether it's repairs or complete replacements, and infrastructure like our buildings and facilities, where air conditioners, as we saw this past budget year, you didn't have a budget and you're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on major air conditioner repairs at the Spector Center. So all these things, we have tried to fund every year, but there's just not been enough funding to successfully build a capital assets renewal replacement plan that is appropriate. And then there are a couple other things, separate from the things I've just mentioned, which all affect the general fund, that Brittany will talk a little bit more about later. We also have stormwater needs, and those are, those, the stormwater infrastructure is funded out of a separate fund, and there are needs there that we have been, up to this point, unable to successfully fund as well. And those needs are really not just dealing with aging infrastructure, as you heard the presentation given by Alan Potter and David King, our engineer, a few weeks back, but you have not only the aging issue, but you have the issue of the need for increased capacity as rainstorm events are greater and more frequent, and we also have a need to improve the treatment of stormwater before it impacts the lagoon as well. And the last thing that just generally affects the budget overall, regardless of all these other things, is just that costs typically go up over time. So we have the costs of, you know, doing business, whether it's the cost of employee health insurance, or things like, you know, insurance for the city generally, all of those costs increase over time, for the most part. So I won't go through a lot of the details that led us to where we're at today, but essentially, the, the citizen budget committee was initially going to be a five-member board. We had 11 people apply, and 10 were actually interviewed, and council decided at that time to go from a five-member board to a seven-member board. So that's why we ended up with, with a greater number. And the committee was charged with the following: review revenues, provide suggestions on ways to increase those revenues or find new revenue sources; review existing expenditures and identify ways to decrease those expenditures; provide ideas for spending cuts or changes in service delivery that would reduce costs but still provide essential city services. And then they were charged with presenting that information to city council. So my, my job here this, this evening is to present you with sort of the backstory, and then different members of the, the committee will be coming forth to, to present to you their thoughts. So essentially, our meeting schedule, we had a total of eight meetings over a couple of months. We started out trying to just meet every other week, but we found that we needed more time for discussion, so the committee voted to add a couple additional meetings, which we held. And essentially, they reviewed a lot of documents. If you're interested in reviewing what the committee looked at, all of that, we created a website, and under the city boards page on the city website, you look for citizen budget committee, and every document we ever gave to the committee that they reviewed and looked at is on there. That's a pretty healthy level of detail. And the committee listened to presentations from department heads, they looked at line items of revenues, they looked at expenditure details, and they had a lot of good conversation about all of that. Tonight's presentation, we wanted to get to you before you start looking at the budget discussion, the budget that we're building, that Brittany's going to talk a little bit more about, wanted to get that to you so you could kind of hear what the committee is, is looking at and has recommended, because the committee's official written report is going to come to you at your July 18 meeting. That will be their, their final report. So with that, I'm going to go through, with the help of the committee members, the majority motions that were made and recommended by the, the group. The first one I'll read out, and then member Millie Sims is going to come up and, and kind of talk about it, because she actually made this motion, and I think she wants to share some thoughts on that. But the, the, the motion is, you can come up, Millie?
Oh, team.
Yeah, so let me read the motion real quick. The motion is to raise the millage rate up to 8.9, we're currently at 8.1518, and to recommend maintaining this rate with any excess going into reserves. And the recommendation that Millie made was also that when reserves meet 15%, that level we talked about, the base operating reserves, that that excess would be directed towards debt service. So Millie, I'll turn over to you for a couple minutes here.
Gosh, thank you so much. So, that wasn't, I don't know. Okay, so thank you, Suzanne, and first off, thank you so much for the opportunity, for this amazing experience, my goodness, who'd have thought? I'm not interested in anything like this at all, and I'm a bowler, and I would do anything to get out of those league meetings, okay? So this is totally not me, and this is off the top. And so thank you for an amazing opportunity, first of all. I know that you, is it not?
Yes.
I can speak louder, certainly. Is this good, can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's working fine.
Thank you. So, where was I? Thank you for the opportunity, and, oh, for expanding to allow a more diverse, you know, team, as it were. And I'm not saying that you expanded it, expanded it from five to seven for me, but certainly for Mr. Larry David, but, no, I'm just kidding, you know, it was bombed. And thank you for, I know you've done a really good job on, for the last five years, bringing that millage rate down consecutively every year, and I'm sure that the citizens that pay the majority of the ad verum and revenue for the city appreciate that. However, with, you know, the aforementioned looming deficit crisis that we're supposed to be solving here, yeah, so it really speaks for itself. I mean, I picked the easiest thing, obviously. It's 80% of the revenue basis, I understand it, and it's the easiest thing to, I don't want to use the word manipulate, but maybe adjust. I know you do it on an annual basis, so my thought process was, if we do it, you know, and we've analyzed the numbers, and I know you guys know the numbers, you've done this, like, you know, this is the no-brainer one, right, low-hanging fruit? We raise it up this one year, take care of this issue, and any, you know, overflow goes here to the, obviously, the reserves that we want to keep, hurricanes, you know, we're still in, what, the started one? Who knows, we don't have another one, two, three, or four? That never happens. But anyway, and then, of course, the debt service, that's like third important, right? So knowing that you can adjust it annually, and I know it says for five-year projection, I think that if you don't need it, you'll bring it down and give the citizens that relief. And I just think that they elected you, and that it should be up to your discretion. And we're, I'm just saying, if you, obviously, if you're considering raising the millage rate, please consider to raise it up as high as 8.9, and that might solve majority, if not all, of the issues in itself. And that was all I was trying to get at. So thank you for your attention, and as an aside, as my, I kind of did my personal experience, thank you, and it was great and wonderful. So my personal opinion is, if you see fit, and I know it's probably impossible, these, good Lord, we have some good people running this city, and thank you for choosing them and keeping them, and they are obviously happy. It was so nice to hear, sorry, cut me off, I just, I can never stop, no, not too long, not me. Anyway, yeah, great people in all the departments. I think that if I remember correctly, the least, Cassie, aside from her 15 years experience and Mr. Chief Pearson, 32, that's amazing, you have great people here. Just in my opinion, please don't do anything to cut any of the already lean budgets, and in particular, police and fire, I just consider it number one, and I think they do an outstanding job on the limitations they have, they have been for a long time. And if that, if it was up to me, I mean, I'd give the fire department additional $150,000 if we had it, they need a fifth man, it's important, you know? We have elderly people here, and I'll just step back. You guys doing a fabulous job. I don't envy you the task of actually making this decision, but I'm sure glad that it's you guys that are doing it. Thank you so much for your service and for your attention.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Millie. Thank you, Millie, I appreciate it. Next, we'll hear from member Cindy Berger on one of our other majority motions.
Hi, I'm Cindy Berger, and I'm on Glenwood Avenue. I also want to thank the committee for the opportunity to be part of this. I'm relatively new to Satellite Beach, so I pay taxes and don't know where a lot of the money went, and so now I know a little bit more about that. This majority motion was a motion I had made. The motion is create departmental operational budget for management of hurricane and other significant events to manage expenses. I appreciated all the presentations we had from individual departments. I feel that a lot of departments operate with lean staffs, and I don't think cutting is a great way to get to managing expenses. However, every, I'm sorry, not every, a majority of the departments had significant overtime budgets, and I know that events like hurricanes contributed to it. So I, with this, I really hope there's a philosophy that says, let's manage our expenses and control them, instead of saying, all hands on deck, and this is how we're going to get through this, because I think there are measured ways to control overtime expenses, to control when we have to agree to fees for debris removal, and some of those big numbers that hit with those particular events. I know that in budgeting, it, it's always a challenge, because you're looking for a balance of how can we increase revenue and how can we, you know, reasonably manage expenses and keep people safe and healthy and happy to be a citizen of this. So I just feel that this particular motion is an opportunity to be thoughtful about how we dedicate extra hours when significant events occur. Thank you.
Cindy, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. And the, the other quick thing I'll run through are the other majority motions, those are the, some of the more significant ones that were presented just now. The other handful that were also approved by the group included raising the stormwater ERU to $200, to, whenever the opportunity presents itself, where we have additional reserve dollars. While we don't have a significant debt issue, the committee was interested in, as part of the overall fiscal health of the city, looking at decreasing, you know, debt where we're able to. So they made a motion and approved it to, every time we have additional money to put into reserves, to take 10% of that and use that to accelerate payments on existing debt, which I thought was a good idea. They also were very interested in things that would promote the city, and one of the motions was to create business development, business relationship, like an actual committee of sorts, or an ad hoc type committee, to increase commercial growth and engagement, and to, to further engage the, the business community. They also recommended that we empower the recreation department to develop a city tour operation using existing assets, so something that wouldn't cost a whole lot of extra money, but the, the goal was to promote the city. It came across loud and clear with this committee that they, they really wanted to promote things that were good about the city, and that tour included things like showing, showing off Samson's Island, showing off the beaches, showing off the restaurants, getting people to, to be more familiar with the great things that we have to offer. And the last majority motion that was made and approved was to consider the feasibility of using assessments to fund future projects. And, and the committee talked about a lot of different scenarios where that could, could play out, but they just wanted to, to keep that on the table as well. And now I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Recker for any comments.
Hello, Kevin Recker, I'll be brief. I would echo the comments made by the other committee members. This was a great experience, I think we all learned a lot. Just want to say I applaud the council for getting other voices involved, the people who aren't necessarily involved in city government. So the, the city staff did a tremendous job laying out what the problems that we face. All the department heads came well-prepared, just a overall, you know, great experience, and as a citizen, I, I feel our city's in very good hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And now I'd like to turn over to member Schler, he was going to cover for us a series of minority motions that were made that were not adopted.
Do I read them first, or do you do the same?
I certainly can, yes, absolutely, you got it. So the minority motions that were, that were introduced to the group are included to maintain the current millage rate of 8.1518, to maintain the current stormwater EU of 104, to reduce the fire department by one-third, and to cut the police department staff by 10%.
Hi, hello, I am Andrew Schler, I live down the street here on Cassia, and I am the minority voice on the, on the committee. I appreciate you allowing me to be on this committee, and it was a great deep dive into how all my money is being spent in this city. Now, I want to say that, as you see, I was just pleading to just leave the tax rate where it was. I didn't ask to cut it. I don't want to reverse the trend that we've had where we're dropping the tax rates, and 10 years ago, we had a much lower rate than this. So I was hoping I could get a lot of people to agree with me, but I couldn't. Everyone wants to raise the taxes. When I looked into it, I think, you know, on the organization chart for the police, it seems we have four teams of a patrol sergeant and two or three patrol officers that roll around the city in patrol every day. I think that's kind of a lot of, you know, three or four people in cars rolling around a city this size is a little much for me. That's why I suggested that we reduce the number of patrol officers we have, and additionally, we have two detectives in this city, and it seems like there's just, I mean, we have 33 employees in the police department, and for a city this size, I think it's too much with a budget of over $3 million to run it every year. The fire department is about two-thirds the budget of the police department with half the employees. The fire department is also responsible for a half a million dollars' worth of our debt, and we have a lot of debt that we need to take care of in this city. And- lot of debt that we need to take care of in this city. And I think that there's a lot of myth about, about this two-in, two-out rule and how we support it, but that rule applies to imminent danger structure fires. And I think that if you go back over many years across the city, I don't know how many events on an annual basis qualify to meet that requirement that we have to staff to that level. It just seems to me like we have, again, too many people and too much equipment down in the fire, in the fire department to support what we need in this city. Now, we heard a lot from the fire department about this move toward community health. And I, you know, age and place was one of the values that you put in front of us. And I'm, I'm not against that, and I'm getting older as well. And I've lived in this city my whole life, and I don't want to cut myself off at the knees by saying, gut all these departments just as I'm becoming elderly, right? But that's a different mission than fire. I mean, community health requires maybe different vehicles, different types of people. We don't need the big pumper trucks, ladder trucks, and things like that to support that kind of activity. So, I see opportunities to lean that out and reorient to this new mission of community health, if that's where we want to go. And it's not a bad idea, but let's reorganize a little bit, I think. I think, according to the five-year financial forecast that I received and looked over, the personnel costs are going to go up by, you know, one and a half million dollars next year. And I think that we're not spending on the things I want to spend money on. If we're, if we're paying more in health insurance, we're paying more in pensions, we're paying for more employees, and to fill backfill and expand things, I think we need to get on a track of reducing, because reducing the number of employees we have reduces our pension costs, our health insurance costs, and all the other things that we're spending. The debt, you know, we put an end to the CRA, and in the end, when we ended the CRA, we ended up with another chunk of debt that we're paying on. You know, part of our capital assets fund, or most of our capital assets fund, goes to paying that debt. And we don't have much left to do the things we need to do, like repair the streets and repair the roads, as Suzanne said, because we're paying, out of $780,000 we get in the capital assets fund, $500,000 goes to debt payments. So, we need to do something here to, to change the direction that we're going, I think. And, and I mean, not only that, but we're going to build a brand-new building for the fire department and the public works departments for another two and a half million dollars in another couple of years, because we're, we want to move them to higher ground or whatever. I think that some of the things that we want to plan on, like charging stations for electric cars and solar panels and renovations of some of the city facilities, maybe we can put them on hold instead of spending our mon, instead spending our money on things like linking together all these beach accesses that we've purchased with a vibrant commercial sector. You know, some walkability where people have shopping and entertainment and restaurants to keep them at the beach through the night, or, you know, through the weekend or something, instead of just going to the beach, hanging out for a few hours, because there's not a bathroom with access that I go to or something, so I can't stay there very long, right? And Sampson's Island is this beautiful, beautiful natural resource we have, but how do I get there from the city? There's no river access or launch in the city anywhere. So, I have to leave the city to get in a boat to get there. It doesn't make any sense to me. These are the things I want to spend my money on, right? You know, spend a lot of taxes here, so I don't want to build bigger and bigger departments for the police and the fire. I want to build more amenities for business development and for recreation and for all those things. So, I'll just say that, in the end, there's 16 municipalities in Brevard County, and only Titusville and Palm Bay and Melbourne Village pay a higher tax rate than we do right now. Melbourne doesn't pay a higher tax rate for the city services than we do. No one along the beach here that are similar-like communities pay a higher tax rate than we do. And I wonder, are they less safe than we are, or is, do they die at a higher frequency than we do? But it also seems they have a little bit better commercial development along the corridors with more places to go and more things to do. So, I am the minority. I recognize that. And I may not reflect the consensus of the citizens of the city, but I want to give my voice to say, I want to use this word fiscal responsibility, to pay down the debt, get us out of this debt, redirect our money toward community development. You know, the community development department has a budget that's half of the fire department, or half of the police department anyway, with half the employees, right? So, it's, we're not spending enough on development, I think, as opposed to safety and security. So, I just want to see us redirect our activities to maintaining our trajectory of lower taxes over time, that we've been doing for the past several years, and spend our money on priorities that benefit the vibrancy and, you know, livability of the city for the people that like to get outside and like to go to the beach and go to the river and go bowling, or go to the movies, or, you know, go to a video arcade, or whatever, right? It's something. Thank you for this opportunity to do this. It was really, really rewarding.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Andrew. And I just want to say, following Andrew's comments, I was very, very impressed and really proud of the group, and how well they worked together on even things they didn't really agree on. They talked it out, they were professional, they dealt with it, and they moved on. So, it was, it was really a pleasure to kind of watch them work. And the last slide is really just, we're kind of at the end of this part of the presentation, and momentarily we'll move to Brittany Jumper, our comptroller, providing another presentation on where we're going with the budget. But before that, last member who wanted to speak tonight is Larry Whitney.
Can I ask you to take one?
Sure.
I have to come in here.
I don't care what the Italians say.
I wrote this out so I would be a little more organized in, in thinking, because financials are near and dear to my heart. And whether it's a municipality or a business, I like to see things run in a certain way. I'm not interested in raising taxes. I'm not interested in lowering taxes. I'm interested in having a revenue source for the city that makes sense to carry out our mission. With that said, I will begin to read. As we are all aware, the Citizens Budget Committee completed its meeting schedule and produced a final report. Behind the words of the report, we find that clear-cut and obvious expense-reduction opportunities do not currently exist. Our committee's schedule allowed for certain information to be shared by the departments of the city, what they do and how they do it. However, there was not sufficient time to perform forensic analysis of each line item, but it was fairly clear that any expense reductions that could have been found would have been, would have been on the margins and would not affect the financial plan of the departments or the city in any material fashion. Given this stated premise, it is the belief of the majority of members of the Citizens Budget Committee that revenues need to be increased in order to have the resources necessary for city council to fulfill its mission. Each member of the team has their own feelings and beliefs about how revenue should be generated. From my perspective, it is less important to recommend which ad valorem or non-ad valorem revenue streams, or combination or chosen. What is critically important is that the city revenues become sufficient. The question becomes, what amount of revenue is sufficient? How much is too much? How much is not enough? How can we strike the right balance? The answer can be found by ensuring that the city supports its core values. Then revenue needs to be determined by utilizing the service cost and quality model, or triangle, as is more commonly known. If I can get you all to imagine for a moment an equilateral triangle, which each side has service cost and quality on it, you see the dependency between one and the other. If you change the length of one, it changes the length of the other, and that's where you get your balance. If you maintain that equal, equalization between the three sides, that's when things function the best. If I, so, in addition to the triangle, in the center, the center must contain the citizens of the community as well as our employees. Without happy employees, customers, or in this case, citizens cannot be happy. By definition of service cost and quality, services get the work out on time, all the time, no excuses, no matter what you do. Cost at the lowest reasonable cost, and quality at the highest possible quality level. If we can achieve those three things, it helps us to understand our financials and what we actually need to spend and where we can save money. In conjunction with the triangle, we must adhere to the five rights. They are having the right resources, in the right place, at the right time, doing the right things, the right way. These are basic tenets to becoming a high-performing organization. They require a deeper look to understand fully their value. Of course, everything we do is for the benefit of our citizens and the city as a whole. In regards to employees, it's imperative that we maintain a workforce that is second to none. We can continue to fulfill that part of the mission by attracting and maintaining a highly qualified, motivated, and inspired staff to manage the day-to-day operations of the city, by promoting and providing a climate and culture where all staff feels valued, by providing training and cross, excuse me, and cross-training to allow for potential promotion opportunities, by providing a comprehensive compensation program that is competitive in the marketplace, that our staff has the opportunity to celebrate their successes from time to time, that our police and fire departments receive the training and equipment necessary to protect the lives and property of our citizens. That's the cities, that the city's financial plans include a financial buffer for unplanned events. Further, develop a methodology to anticipate the cost of unplanned events, as they now exist, and what they may look like in the future. Utilize this exercise to better understand the social, environmental, and economic risks the city may encounter during and after such unplanned events. In other words, narrow the variables to mitigate risk. That the recreation department be provided with the necessary level of resources to accomplish their goals and objectives and clearly align with the city's values. That the city's public works receives the necessary funding to properly maintain our roads and everything else within the dimensions of their responsibility. This is comment off the cuff. Without having the proper funding, without having the proper resources in a, in a department, you cannot hold people accountable for the work that's done or not done. They're just constantly putting out fires and moving people around, and that's always, that's always the story. And you never get to a place where you can understand what productivity and unit costs and things like that look like. With all of that said, there are people in the community that believe that revenue should not increase regardless of the need or circumstances. There are some that believe that the city should learn to live with less revenue, reduce service levels, and not concern itself with things like storm cleanup. It has been stated that the citizens may complain, but funds should not be wasted on such events. There is a belief that the fire department should be, should be subjected to significant reductions in people and equipment. There are those that believe the police department is overspent, overstaffed and spends too much. There are those that believe that the city has too many lawnmowers, and it's all a waste of money. I can go on and on, but I think you get the point. Although I strongly disagree with this approach, it is shared by some, and they are part of the community and therefore need to be heard. To those people, raising taxes is not any different from raising electric rates or water rates, or even a gasoline tax. You pay more for the service, you pay more for the service levels, but the levels appear to remain the same. If one is not able to see what is, what one is getting for their money, and there is no physical evidence of a value proposition to be seen or felt, people feel taken advantage of. Based on the anecdotal findings of the Citizens Budget Committee, as well as my own understanding of city operations, my personal recommendation is to increase the city's annual revenue stream by $1.2 million annually. This should, this should and needs to be an increase above the current rates in effect. Quick arithmetic suggests that an increase of 1.2 million equates to about $300 per household, or approximately $25 a month. As stated earlier in my remarks, the channels of funding the council chooses to utilize are not nearly as important as increasing the funding to the city in order to effectively carry out the mission and responsibilities of this body. I would expect that this approach will be a hard sell for city council. It is commonly accepted that no one, including me, wants to pay more for anything, especially taxes. Therefore, I am proposing a three-pronged approach to lessen the blow. One, the city should adopt a zero-based budget process that will justify and clearly explain all expenditures. Two, financial and operational reporting must change. There needs to be more clarity in what's being spent and what the expenditures are used for. There needs to be a closer relationship between budget and actual invariance explanations. Operationally, reports would examine work performed in a context rather than, than mere wow statements. I would like to see standardized reporting formats for all departments, as well as formalized quarterly presentations. This would allow for expense roll-up and the ability to uncover savings opportunities not currently visible. Compreh, and three, comprehensive and simple-to-understand presentations should be developed and presented to groups in the community. They will need to include details in how city money is spent and what the increases will go toward, and how this additional funding will help maintain and improve our quality of life in Satellite Beach. These presentations must include risk analysis associated with not acting upon the challenges we face. The community must be brought up to speed. In closing, I wish to mention that every now and then, a governing body is presented with an incredible opportunity to fundamentally change the direction of its community. These opportunities usually present themselves during periods of stress. I believe this is one of those moments in time. The state's proposal to increase the homestead exemption by $25,000 has provided this city with a chance to take a deep breath, and rather look at the proposal solely as a problem, but view it as an opportunity turned inside out. It is all up to us, it's all up to all of us to seize that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Very much.
Staff has a presentation next. I don't know if you want to take a short break.
It's 10 after, approximately. Let's meet back at 20 after. I'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you. And at this time, we'll have the presentation of five-year financial forecast.
Good evening, all. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to share more presentations with you. I know you're
Thank you.
So, we'll go into it, really just to talk about what you guys had done in April. You had set, set a city values, which we used with the Citizens Budget Committee to kind of go into, dive into the revenues and expenditures, and figure out how, what we do here in the city meets the city values that you guys put together back in April. So, as, as we do that, we go into, you know, what's important here into the city. So, we talk about, you know, the lagoon. That's something, it's always been something that's very important. Our public safety, the police and fire, our beaches, our facilities, our infrastructure, our community garden, getting our community together to do more things together as one. Those are the types of things that are important to the city. So, one of the things that was brought up in the Citizens Budget Committee was, you know, how is it that some of these other beachside communities have a lower millage rate than the city of Satellite Beach? Well, part of the reason is because the city of Satellite Beach has a lot more facilities to maintain than some of the other surrounding communities. Throughout the years, the Satellite Beach community has prioritized the preservation of these lands for future residents of the city. So, for a moment, let's consider what the revenue would be if we were to develop some of these lands that are vacant. So, we talked about Sampson Island. We have 52 acres there. Rough figures here, these are all very conservative. You know, we talked about with the homestead exemption, so we're saying that all of these properties here would get that additional homestead exemption, so there would be a $75,000 homestead exemption. So, Sampson Island would be about $418,000 revenue, additional revenue, if we were to, you know, build on it. The Satellite Beach Sports Park, Recreation Park, another 40 acres there, 100 and, almost 118,000. Gemini Beach Access, it'd be another 106,000. So, total, total for all three of those is $643,000 additional revenue if we were to decide to build on those pieces of land.
Can I stop you there real quick?
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure that people understand we're not proposing to develop any of these properties. Just giving an example of, of what happens when, when we take things off the tax rolls. Not only do you, do you negate that revenue, but on top of that, you add expenses. So, now we have to maintain all of these facilities. So, for example, So for example, I had, In the Atlantic called me the other day and said, hey, you know, I'm just calling to, is having a dog park truly revenue or expense neutral? And I started chuckling, and I was like, of course it's not. We have to resaw that area once a year. We have irrigation, we have fencing, we have staff members, we have a computer program to accept fees, we have to check their shots, you know? I mean, it's not a, it's definitely not an expense-neutral endeavor. Now, if you chose to have a big fenced-in area with no staff and none of those other things, then sure, you might be able to get away with just having a field for your dogs to run in. But the way we chose to do that here is that there's an expense. Things like the Schecter Center, that is a big facility. To redo the roof of that facility is $400,000. To do the air conditioning, we just spent $265,000 on the AC units. To replace the gym floors, we just got a bid back for $115,000. To do the dance floors, it costs us $95,000. So these facilities are very, very expensive to maintain, on top of the fact that we took that facility off the tax rolls. So I want people to understand that. When we talk about the fire department and Satellite Beach, like if we compare ourselves to Indian Harbor Beach, Indian Harbor Beach doesn't have a fire department, a paid fire department. They have a volunteer fire department. So that's a whole nother world, that they don't respond to EMT calls, they only respond to fire instances. Our fire department predominantly, the largest calls that they respond to are EMT calls. So when we talk about service reductions, if we do, I want residents to, you know, if you think about, okay, you know, I would like to see us cut instead of increase the revenue, it would be better if we could hear things like what you're willing to accept. You know, if we took a 10% decrease in PD, you know, what are you willing to accept in terms of service reduction? Are you willing to accept the police not responding to your noise complaint? Because there's so many cities I've worked for, that I, you know, we got those noise complaints, and the police department was like, I can't handle that right now, there's no way. So those are the types of things that we do here that they just don't do elsewhere. And the idea of decreasing the fire department staff, you know, a lot of the reason why we have four people on shift is because we can run dual calls for EMT calls. So if they're responding to a heart attack, are you willing to not have them show up for the next heart attack that happens at the same time? That type of thing is, that service reduction is what we would need you to agree to, the result of the service reduction. What kind of facilities? The $600,000 homestead exemption is 600,000, is 73% of our rec. department. It's about, I would say, 30% or 40% of our public works department. So are you willing to give those things up? What facilities are we willing to close? Those are the things that we need to talk about. So it's great to say we want to, you know, cut, but I would like to have that direction from the council or the community, if that's the direction we're going, is exactly what service reduction you're willing to take.
So we go to the next, which Courtney is explaining, that everything does have a cost, so how do we keep up with that? I'm no miracle worker. I don't have a magic ball to tell me what's going to come down the pipeline. We have state mandates that come down all the time that we have to figure out how to deal with, just like this homestead exemption. We have infrastructure needs that we need to try to figure out how to fund, and then we have natural disasters. We don't know when the next hurricane's going to happen, but we need to try to figure out how to start funding that in case someone does happen. So in this slide, it's got the last 10 years of millage rates here. I'm going to pick on 2011 specifically to kind of give you an idea, because back in 2011, the millage rate was an 8.5285. So consider, if we would have left the millage rate at that point and continued on through these years, we would have had an additional $1.1 million sitting in our fund balance right now. I just felt like it was important to show you that, because as we've talked about, you know, revenues continue to go up, expenditures continue to go up. If revenues decrease, do the expenditures decrease? How do you balance that?
Can you go back one slide real quick? Just real quick, sorry. So I'm going to add again. If you look at 2008, you see that's where the recession began.
Yep.
Okay? So you see how the millage rate went up? That's because property values were going down. So the city's trying to make up that reduction in revenue. So the millage rate starts creeping up. So you see back where it goes into 2011? It went down, and it starts, it stayed the same because we're trying to recover. And then we start trying to move it down again, and so the city tries to lower the millage rate every time the city thinks that we are bringing in more money than we need. What that does not show is that your taxes never go down with the millage rate decrease. What it shows is that the cities, if your taxes went down, your millage rate would go below what we call the rollback. So, trying to explain this. The reason why you see a higher millage rate in the city of Satellite Beach compared to places like City of Melbourne is because we don't have new construction. So we think, like the Oceana is new construction, that's nothing compared to what Melbourne gets, or West Melbourne. Those new properties coming into the city in terms of taxes, they're paying for the same roads, the same police, the same fire, so that's basically more revenue, but they have less people, or more people paying for it. You see what I'm saying? Paying for those services. So it's bringing in more revenue. And what they can do is lower the millage rate, a lot lower than what we can, because there's more people coming in to pay for those services, where we don't have that.
I'm sorry.
Okay?
The chatter, please. Thank you.
So what this is, basically, what she's trying to show you is, we have a lot of political pressure among the community and anywhere else to lower the millage rate, and that's fine. But if we never did, some of those problems that we're having right now might not have been there, is what she's trying to say.
So the next slide we go into is what's needed. What do we need to try to fund? And the biggest portion, I think, is the infrastructure needs. We do need a new Public Works building. As most of you know, it is a building that is in desperate need of help, and so we need one. And the roads need to be paved, and there's sidewalks that need to be replaced, and there's curbs that need to be replaced. But all of these things take money. They're not, and as they continue to take money, we also have to have the workers to be here to do those types of jobs as well. And as, you know, City Manager Courtney was talking about, we just replaced the AC unit at the DRS Center. There are other buildings that those types of things will come down the road that we'll have to replace as well. And replacement vehicles. Public Works hasn't had a new vehicle since 2010. They're driving around vehicles that are old, but they don't complain, they just do it. And, you know, so now we're trying to figure out a plan of attack there, too, where we need to bring in new vehicles for them. And, you know, the reserve needs, as our Citizens Budget Committee and Suzanne were talking about, you know, one of the things that we're supposed to do is try to keep a 15% of our operating costs in reserves. So we need to do that as well as also put another side to, for natural disasters, anytime, you know, a hurricane were to come through. So the general fund options: raise the millage rate, cut services, or find new revenue streams. Those are the options. So staff recommendation, you've listened to the Citizens Budget Committee and what their recommendations are to you. Staff recommendation would be to increase the millage rate to an 8.8212. As previously stated, it's currently at an 8.1518. This would allow to transfer funds to the capital assets for the infrastructure that we desperately need to be doing, also building reserves for cash flow as well as future natural disasters. Currently, right now, as the budget is being prepared, the estimated revenues are going to be $12,569,517. The estimated expenditures are $12,279,374. So that leaves a net position of a little over $290,000, looking to transfer $100,000 of that to capital assets, which would then bring our estimated fund balance up to $735,000 at the end of fiscal year 1819. I'm going to continue to say this, as you all are very well aware, that the budget is a very dynamic, changes every day, it seems like. So these are estimated numbers, and I'm hopeful that they're going to get better as we, you know, continue to go through line items and clean some things up. So on this next slide is the general fund five-year forecast, broken down by each fiscal year, for the next five years of what the anticipated revenue would be if we were to move the millage rate to an 8.8. Personnel costs, they normally goes up somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000. This next year is going up to about $300,000, $300,000 due to the two new SROs that are going to have to be hired, school resource officers, due to the salary survey that has been adopted. And then, of course, you know, their 2% COLA, and currently, this is an estimation of an additional 5% increase to health insurance. So that's where the personnel cost comes in. One of the new things that we're adding to the budget this year is we're actually going to dedicate a line item for natural disasters. We'll put $100,000 into it. Hopefully, if we don't have one, then that $100,000 will go directly into the bottom lines of the fund balance. But I think it's time to start putting something in that line item to try to help, people can see it, you know, that we're doing what we can to try to help alleviate this. So at the end of five years, in '22, '23, if we move the millage rate to an 8.8, the fund balance would be at the end at 1.249, 185. And at the bottom there, I put the note, the 15% reserve goal would be at 1.8. So we're not quite there, but at least I think there's an effort that we're really trying to get there. So the plan for the capital assets for fiscal year 1819 is we would like to start the architecture, design, and engineering for the Public Works and Fire Department building, install cameras at the skate park, purchase four new vehicles for Public Works, and then any additional funds, we would try to transfer from the general fund to capital assets to allow the projects to start developing for roads, sidewalks, and curbing. So that's all about the general fund. Do we have any questions before I move forward into the Stormwater?
I just want to, real quick, the buildings that we're talking about for Public Works and the Fire Department, right now, Public Works and the Fire Department are in flood zones, and the Public Works Department, I could condemn tomorrow, actually today, I can condemn it right now.
Can you do that?
That's how bad a shape it's in. So that building has to be replaced, and that would be slated to be replaced first. The second is Fire Department building, which right now is in a flood zone as well. So there's certain buildings that you cannot have in a flood zone, and a fire department would be one of them. And so the plan would be, over a period of five years, to move the Fire Department to the property that we purchased on Jackson. So those are pretty necessary projects at this point. At some point, we have to start replacing buildings and things like that. Yes, sir.
The, one thing, you can't plan for this, but we're still also owed money from FEMA that isn't figured into this, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we don't know if we're going to get that, but...
Right. So we have, we've sent in all of our information to Senator Mayfield, who has offered to help us try to get some of the funds, you know? But apparently, Irma isn't even on the radar yet. So we still are owed a little over $100,000 for Matthew, if I'm not mistaken, right?
So an emergency event generally would cost the city somewhere around $300,000 an event? Is that what they've been averaging?
I would say, yeah. I would say somewhere between 3 and 5 would probably be a better number.
Because even though, so even though we get reimbursed by FEMA, we don't get reimbursed for everything. If it's insurable, then you don't get reimbursed by FEMA. So facility damages are insured, and some of those aren't fully paid. So it depends on our insurance and what that, you know, what that covers. So there's expenses that we won't, that the city just incurs. You know, there's, I think that there's a lot of things that we can do that will make it less expensive as time moves on, because we've learned a lot. It takes, you know, a lot of rehashing and going over the events after they're done to say, okay, you know, we could have done this better, we could have done that better. I think in both instances, I'm not real sure we can decrease our overtime expenses, but I think we can decrease our debris removal expenses over time.
Thank you.
And then, you know, to go back to the vehicles, we had, in 2013, when I started, we had to replace five police vehicles right that year because they were falling apart. We have got them on a rotation now. So we do not have to, you know, expend an ungodly amount of money every year, you know, or, you know, in one year to make up for something that hadn't happened over time. So what I'm trying to say there is, when you don't maintain things and you don't keep them up, it costs you more later. And that was one instance where we had to just pony up that much money. The next year, we had to start replacing fire trucks, and we had to replace two at once. And so that was hard on the city in terms of, but we had to finance that, so that's why we have that debt in there. So when we look at the vehicles for Public Works, now we're trying to tackle that problem. We're going to bring back a pretty creative way to address that, I think, at your next meeting. So you'll see that come on your agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this is just a brief overview of the Stormwater Fund for the next five years. I'm going to move off to this slide because I'm going to talk about this a little more in detail of how we get here. So again, the staff recommendation actually falls right in line with what the Citizens Budget Committee had agreed to as well, is to go ahead and increase the Stormwater ERU to a 200. You guys have seen the Stormwater Master Plan, and over the next 10 years, Stormwater pipe unit will be replaced to address capacity treatment and agent infrastructure issues. If we were to go ahead and increase the ERU to a 200, this would allow this project to start immediately at the beginning of the fiscal year. This is going, flip back for just a second. This is going to add more revenue into the Stormwater Fund, which would allow that Stormwater Master Plan project line item. You'll see those numbers kind of go in line with the Stormwater Master Plan that David King and Alan Potter had presented at the last meeting, to be able to continue to be able to afford to do what we need to do to get everything back up to par. So the overall impact of the staff recommendation, if we were to raise the millage rate to an 8.8212 and go ahead and move the ERU from 104 to 200, on average, to a single-family property, would pay an additional $213.33 annually, which is, equates to $17.78 per month in fiscal year 1819. And those property owners who are eligible for the additional homestead exemption, if it were to pass in November, would also see that decrease starting in the fiscal year And that's it.
Thank you.
Question. We've always done Stormwater, and obviously, it's a big issue right now with the lagoon and so forth. And we're mandated by the state to reach certain criterias by dates. We did very good in the past with grants. So we need money in order to have that matching into it. I think we need to go back and make a big effort on grants. And we did good before, and I think it's time now that we make our money grow for us by using these grants. We have to do something Stormwater-wise. It's not going away. It's like the roof of your house, the second you buy a house, it could be a brand-new house. But every day, you're getting closer to replacing the roof or the air conditioner or something, and I think we're there in a lot of these cases. So where we can go grants, I would like to make that, you know, a staff goal to see how we can obtain as many Stormwater grants now. There should be quite a few of them out there with the Indian Lagoon National Estuary programs and stuff of this nature that are out there.
We actually built this plan, like the costs that you see in the plan are predicated on us obtaining those grants. So if we didn't get those grants, then the Stormwater fee would be allowed. So actually, it's built in that plan to go after those. Unfortunately, we can only get grants for things like water quality projects that would affect, like basically reducing the nutrients entering the lagoon, but we can't get grants for our pipe replacements, and that's just a large part of this project. It's just, unfortunately, our city is at that age where it's coming, where things are starting to fall apart, and we have to address that, so.
Okay, thank you, Brittany. Thank you very much. Questions for Brittany at this time? I'm going to open up for public comment, and then I can come back also. So any questions at this time? Thank you for the presentation. Staff, any further questions? Okay. At this time, for this agenda item, which encompassed quite a few items, the public comments is open.
My name is Andrew Flure. I live on Cassie Boulevard down the street here. I kind of, first of all, the Stormwater. The Stormwater Fund, right now, you collect $500,000 a year from the ERU, and it's a 10-year plan, so that'll be $5 million over 10 years. And the bill for it right now is estimated at $6.7 million. If you double it, we'd get to $10 million, because we'll go to $1 million a year, right? And that'll be over. So I don't think we need to double it anyway. So I don't think we need to double it anyway, the ERU. But, um, also, I kind of object to saying that if we cut the Fire Department, that I have to wait for my heart attack or somebody else's heart attack. I mean, the response time from the Fire Department to my house is the distance between the Fire Department and my house, not how many trucks or how many people are there, but one truck traveling that distance, that's the response time, right? So I, I think that there's, it's bad to characterize it in a way that if I ask for cuts to some of these services, that I'm going to have to give up some critical thing like my safety or my life along the way. I think we need to be neutral about it and just say, it's equipment and people and the mission and what can we accomplish with that, not that if I cut something, I'm going to lose something directly.
Andrew, I adore you, and I appreciate your service, but I disagree with everything you just said.
Well, I, I object to some of the things you said, so we're, we're.
The reason why is, um, the reason why is, uh, is I understand, uh, because I've worked in the government for a long time, and I understand the cake-and-eat-it-to-you concept that some people have with government, and I completely understand that. But when we're talking about cuts to public safety, there is an absolute service response time impact. And if we cut the Fire Department in a third, as you recommended, and we have, we lose that four-person-per-shift staffing, you will not be able to do dual calls. So if one person is having a heart attack and another person's doing another one at the same time, that will be an impact. So I'm just, that's, that is something that people need to understand that, because people aren't going to call the Budget Advisory Committee members when that happens. They're going to call us. And I need to make sure that the city council members and the staff and the, and the residents understand that service impact when we make some, a cut like that. That needs to be understood.
I understand that, but there were 93 concurrent calls, as reported to us by the Fire Chief, right? And I think many of those were canceled along the way at some point because they were in other cities or something. So out of 365 days in a year, 93 times it came up, but the other 270 days or so, I staff for that eventuality. And I know you can't predict when those things are going to happen, but I'm willing to take a little bit of risk along the way, I guess is what I'm saying.
So that's what you're saying, is you're willing to risk that?
I'm going to take some risk in order to save money and use that money that I'm collecting to fund other things that are more valuable to me, like access to the river.
Understood.
Or access to Sampson's Island, right?
So we agree, basically. I mean, we're agreeing right now. That's, that, that not being able to do that dual-call risk is something you're willing to, to take.
Right. I just, I just object that sometimes it sounds like, I, you know, sounds threatening in some way to say that, oh.
It's just something that people need to understand.
You're having a heart attack, and so you're the second guy on the list, you're not, you're going to die, right? So that's just a scary way to characterize it, I think, and.
When those complaints come in, it is very serious for us. I mean, that, that's something that we have to address.
I understand.
And I think there's another avenue to it, and I'm not sure if the Fire Chief is still here, but.
Should I stay here or should I?
No, you're, you're welcome to stay there. No problem. Andrew, you can stay if you want, if you have more to say. When I came on, I asked a question, and I talked to the chief. And I asked him, well, if you send four people on a call, there's a, he showed me a correlation between the number of people that come on a call, and there's a five, the survival rate in these incidences of heart. And when you take that and go from four to three, or from three to two, the num, the drastic drop in a good outcome in it. And I, I have, my feeling is, I'm going to forego the boat launch to save someone's life. I mean, I, and I tell you, I love boats. I have a fleet. But I don't, I, I can't relate that, to that. If I'm going to spend the same dollar, I'm going to make sure my citizens, from a health end, and their children are taken care of. And I, I have an app on my phone, and it's amazing, it goes off the night, I can't tell you how many times, and it's a 911 calls. And the number of them are staggering sometimes. It varies, but I'm going to play to the side of safety myself in what the statistics show me, that a well-staffed medical, I don't know when the next fire is going to be. No, we don't know any of that. But what I know is, where would I want my dollars spent? And right now, I look at it from a safety standpoint, that the statistics that I see from the, the health end, it's drastic difference between four people on a call and two people on a call. You can make statistics, I'm sure, come out any way you want to make them come out. Larry and I have had this talk, but I have to take the experts' involvement here, and my end is safety is important, so.
I, I, I don't disagree with that, but that's a different mission than fire. And I think right now, I have two $400,000 fire trucks back there, plus some smaller equipment, right, that are for fire, and I'm staffed for fire. So if we're moving toward paramedic and first response to save people from illness and death immediately, then that's a different mission. So let's take a look at, why do I have this debt on the fire trucks, and why do I have so many, so many staff there to support that activity?
Thank you. Public comment is open, please.
Question, comment, I guess, in addition to the, if you, if you cut police and fire.
Yes, say your name, state your name. Okay. And then, if you would, please, address the council.
Hi, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, council. If you cut police and fire to budget and have an influx in citizen activity, nightlife, more restaurants, more hot ovens, more people out on the roads along there, then what are we going to need? More down the line. We're going to need, need more police and fire. That's something to think about. Because you're looking at statistics now, and you're talking about adding all this other stuff, that's when we're going to really need police and fire. So that's just something, that's a point I wanted to make.
Further citizens' comments?
Cheryl Deanen, 606 Barcelona Court. Um, several years ago, my son sustained a neck injury on the Satellite Beach football field. Uh, 911 was called, but at the time, the, the principal did not know that 911 was called. He tried to dial 911 and could not get through. I tried to dial 911 and could not get through. In fact, your sister may have dialed 911, and she could not get through. When someone finally got through, what the dispatcher told us is that they were on the call with the football coach. We only have one dispatcher on at one time. So how do you field multiple calls? I have that, um, audio of that tape. I don't have it with me, but the fact is, you can only field one 911 call at a time. So if you have multiple incidents, how do you deal with that?
Chief, can you?
Can somebody fix that? Doesn't need to be squared in?
Yes, we, we field multiple 911 calls all the time. Every 911 call has to be answered within 10 seconds. And calls, 911 calls don't go unanswered, they can't go unanswered, because if they're not answered in a timely fashion, they're rolled over to the sheriff's office. So, and, and actually, weirdly, it's never happened in the 30 years that I know of. But I believe that even at the sheriff's office, for some reason, everybody's just, I don't know, doing something. They're rolled over to mail, which has never happened. But we, we answer multiple 911 calls all the time. And whether we have one or two, obviously, two is better because they can get things done. But we will answer the, we will answer the call, and 911 emergency, are you calling about the fire? If they say yes, we hang up, answer the next one. Are you calling about fire? Yes. 10 calls later, we can say, are you calling about fire on whatever? And they say, no, I have a vet emergency, then we handle that. And that one person does, and that does happen.
Thank you very much. Is the podium still open, please?
John Fergus, 135 Maple. One thing that I don't, didn't catch in the presentation, we have to catch up on roads, we have to catch up on Stormwater, we have to catch up on facilities. As I recall during the presentation by Alan and David, they're talking like in a 10-year period. And I think at that time, it was mentioned and maybe even stressed, that after you got through that and got everything fixed up, we would drop to a maintenance mode, which means hopefully that $200 Stormwater would go down at some point after you'd caught up. And hopefully, the same thing on roads and things. So this isn't like this goes on forever, at least hopefully not. Now, of course, by that time, the cost of a ton of asphalt will probably be two or three times what it is today. So as far as dollars, it will probably be more, but as far as how many loaves of bread it will pay by, it probably will be less. And, uh, as far as dispatch, the fire down in Jamaica, my wife woke me up, I saw the light in the sky, I called dispatch, and then later, I had a discussion with the chief because I didn't get our dispatch, I got the county dispatch. There was a little confusion there because I kept talking about the dog park and the library, and the person said, which we're, what, you know, what city are you in? And that straightened it out. But, uh, that, that does happen. And he explained how that gets fixed. And, uh, there was one other thing, but I didn't have anything to write it with, so anyway, I made two points.
Thank you, John. The floor is still open on this agenda item? Larry?
Larry Whitney, 499 Glenwood Avenue. How long, I would like, I'd like to hear this, because I'm not here that long. How long has this city had a Fire Department and a Police Department?
Since day, day one.
It goes, so it goes back 30 years, 40 years, 50 years?
Well, yeah, I moved here in 1959, and they had one.
Okay, I just, I just needed to know that.
Where it was at is on the left-hand side, chief's office. So the City Hall was where basically the police chief's offices, the Fire Department was behind it, um, at that time. So, and it was a volunteer, because I can tell you when they met. The siren went off at 10 minutes to 7 on Wednesday nights. So just for a little history there. Yeah, so we've always had that provision.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because the city of Satellite Beach has a certain culture, a certain history, a certain identity. And part of that identity, part of the things that attracted my wife and I to want to move here is the fact that we had our own, our own police, our own fire, our own Public Works. All those kinds of things were very attractive to moving to this kind of community. I don't really understand, we're not destitute. We, we have some, we have some issues here to deal with financially, and there are ways to rectify them. And we could have a discussion about, you know, you want to, you want to fix Stormwater, do you want to fix it in three years or 10 years? And we can discuss the, the pros and cons and the financials about that. But this, this body is not broke, and I don't understand why, I mean, for me personally, I do not want to do anything to the Police Department or the Fire Department. The only thing I want to do is somebody brought up a, a single point of failure, maybe we should hire another dispatcher so that we have two. I am, I'm, I'm, I'm just making that point, I'm only making that point because sooner or later, it all comes down to how much risk do you want to assume and how much you're willing to, to put aside and say, I will assume that risk, but as soon as, as soon as the risk occurs, then everybody's yelling and screaming like, where was my city? Where was my government? I've seen it in the private sector, I've seen it in the public sector, it happens all the time. It's very, very simple to say, I'm going to assume risk. Until that risk shows its face, and then everybody's upset. So just please keep that in mind while we're making these decisions.
Thank you. Floor still open? Thank you for your comments, everybody. I'll close. Public comment?
May I? Can I? Go ahead.
Okay. Interesting on the police and fire end of it, because I ask everybody, or most everybody that comes and we puts on, put on boards, I always ask everybody a question because I'm very interested in why you moved to this town. Because mine's a different answer. I stayed here. Some people came back. Why did people move to the town? And it's very interesting, because the people that moved to our town recently knew what the millage rate was in this town. But they, but they moved here for a reason, and that reason continually comes up as the first thing they say. It was, it's a safe town, it has great schools. So there's reasons people want to migrate to this town. And I can tell you, in 1959, the tax rate was totally different than it is today, than my parents paid. But we have choices. And when I talk to people, it continually comes up. And I know as a council, there's no way, I'm as cheap as it comes, ask my wife about anything. And I don't want it wasted, but I, there are certain things that are too valuable. And children and people's lives are too valuable to me. And for $17 or $15, I'm not sure what we settle on in the future. I have a hard time, to be very honest, because of the way our system intertwines, the way our Fire Department and the Police Department intertwine by doing multiple things. And the Fire Department's not just a fire. All those guys are paramedics and EMTs, and that, that is part of the system. So anyway, Courtney?
I just wanted to emphasize that you, you'll see a lot of people, um, push back on tax increase, tax rate increases, because the way our tax system is set up in this state of Florida is it's very forgiving to homeowners and very unforgiving to second homeowners and commercial property owners. So every time we do a $25,000 homestead exemption, you'll see that tax burden shift over to investor owners and to property, commercial property owners. So people who do not have a homestead exemption are the ones that pay the bulk of taxes in the state of Florida. So that's why you'll see, you know, people whose, whose livelihood is based on investment properties and things like that, they will fight against tax increases for that reason, is because it's personally very heavy impact on them. And, and so if you look at a non-homesteaded property compared to a homesteaded property that's been protected by Save Our Homes and three homestead exemptions coming up, you'll see a stark difference in the amount of taxes they pay.
Thank you. Questions from council?
No, I just kind of go comment, you know, I, I find it interesting, you know, every time we have these meetings, we have a kind of a specific topic that we talk about, but all these topics are intertwined with each other. And I don't know how many times we sit up there and we listen about, you know, them building new buildings up there where their old Ramada was. And people so upset about, don't build anything more, don't build on the beach, don't build. Well, in essence, what you're saying is, I'm willing to pay more taxes, don't build that, because there goes your revenue source. Um, and you can't compare us with Indian Harbor Beach and Indian Atlantic, because that's condo city from the beginning of the city limits to the end of the city limits. They don't have 40% of the beach that's available. Now, the reason we have 40% of the beach available, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was a lot of community votes and a lot of stuff that went into that, that was residents who said, buy the land, don't build on it. So I would find it kind of ironic if it's the same citizen who said, don't build on the land, to be the same citizen that says, don't raise the taxes.
You have no idea how many times I hear that.
Because it, it, because you can't do, you can't do that. You have a revenue source, we have 40% of land out there in our city as a revenue source, but the same citizens are the ones that says, don't build on it. And again, I, I know we've all heard it, I don't know how many millions of times, with the buildings going up in place of the building that was there. People say, you know, I can't believe we're building more, we're building more, we're building more. I certainly hope these are the same people that say, don't build anything, that don't have any issues with a tax increase. Because in essence, that's what you're saying. Don't build means I will accept to pay more money in place of that revenue. That's why I say, you know, our meetings are, are really intertwined. We may be talking about budget save, but it wasn't but a few weeks ago, we were talking about building and, and stuff like that. And you have to look at the whole picture and put that together to be able to say that.
Thank you.
You know, the property tax exemption, the homestead exemption, that's a tax shift, and Courtney touched on it. Basically, what it's doing is it's giving homesteaded property owners a small break in passing and shifting the costs on to businesses and to people that own second homes. I have, I have rental property, so I understand, I share some of that cost, but I also look at it as.
But I also look at it as, you know, when you, when you have the quality of life that we have here, I'm willing to pay what I need to pay to do what I consider to be important in my life. If you look at the 93 or the 92 concurrent calls we had, if 10 of those people died, that would have been 10 deaths that we could have prevented by having fire service. If 40% of those were not really important, I understand that, but if those other people that passed away could have been saved, that's a responsibility that we have to our residents. And Steve touched on, and Brittany touched on, the properties, just some of the properties that we could have developed. And this mentality was going on way before I'd been sitting up here. Because the people of Satellite Beach for years had been looking at quality of life issues and Steve touched on them. Those 40, now 40% of the beachfront is quality of life issues with people that live in this community. They've looked at it for years. So we could have developed a lot of that property and our millage rate would be as low as Indian Harbors, as low as Indian Atlantics. But you also have to remember, Indian Harbor Beach doesn't have a paid fire. They have a volunteer fire department. So there's different dynamics that we look at in our city that our residents expect. And we have to make decisions and they're not always easy. So I just want you to understand that some of the things that we do here might seem easy, but they're not.
Thank you. You have one, please.
I won't be long because I know we're all tired and I know I'm very hungry and I'm getting hangry. Anyways, when I, when I, when I decided to run for council, it was suggested to me to do a ride along. And I did a ride along with the police. And I can honestly tell you that the evening that I did a ride along wasn't a busy night, but I do know that I found that there were enough people staffed for that particular evening. They had people having to transport to the prison, which is a good 45 minutes away. So anytime you arrest somebody, if they don't have somebody transporting it for them, this one happened to be a poor little 80-year-old woman that threw a glass at her husband and it was, it was all the situation. Anyways, I would strongly suggest if ever you're questioning or you want to know where your money is going, they will willingly sign you up and you can do a ride along, you can do it with the fire department, you can do it with the police department. And if you don't really understand, because I didn't really understand the process, other than maybe being a little bit of a juvenile delinquent in my younger years, it really was very informative for me. And that's, what was my other point? I lost it. Anyways, that was my only point. And the budget's hard, it's, it's not an easy thing to do, but, you know, we do what we gotta do. And I don't want to have a heart attack and not have a paramedic there, just saying.
Thank you. Mark?
I just have one thing, and Dominic, you were involved in all this property stuff. I mean, you know where Karate Park is and that was your idea. But I just get a little bit of history. I was, I was mayor at the tail end of us buying this 40% of our beachfront property. And that was, and Frank was right there with us. It was, it was quite a time because it was, it was such a movement to try to save that property. And when you're buying up this property and we're all, we're all sitting here going, we really were sitting here going, oh crap, what are we going to do about taxes in what X number of years? Well, we're going to do what the people want us to do, we're going to buy up beachfront property. And we did a lot of that with grants and that was with our grant writers at the time, which were great people and did a great thing. But there was a point where I'm thinking, and I know we all were, are we doing the right thing? And after it was all done, we couldn't buy up anymore. I think our last, our last one was Dominic's idea on getting the one at the end of Sunrise there. And I was sitting at some meeting and Mary Ann O'Neil, who was the mayor of Indian Harbor Beach, came up to me and she said, I don't know how you guys did it, but it's really kind of neat how you bought up all of that land. We wanted to get started on that, but we just got started too late. And the only thing we got was Millennium Park. That's all we got. We really, I, it's really interesting how you guys did all that. And to me, that kind of validated that that's what Indian Harbor Beach wanted to do, but they got started too late on it. But it, you know, coming forward, here we are in 2018, yes, it creates tax situations, but I never get any second thoughts about, did we do the right thing? Because we bought, we did the right thing. And we had a lot of people tell us we were doing the right thing, but our neighbors to the south believe we did the right thing too. So my comment.
Thank you. Okay. This particular item has no vote because it was for providing information only. And I can tell you, this will be back to us many meetings over the next two and a half months. So thank you, staff, very much for, and the people for participating, especially the board and everybody, thank you. Moving on to agenda item 10, which I know a lot of people are here for, discuss take action on finding regarding residents' request to allow the use of golf carts. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I appreciate you being here. And I really mean that because if I wasn't here, we'd be chasing fireworks calls. So I appreciate you being here. We're, I'm here to make a, to provide some information and to look for a direction. I was asked to look into the possibility of allowing this city to be golf cart friendly or having golf carts in our community. Well, we all know that the law changed recently that allows golf carts to be made street legal and registered, titled, tagged, and driven on the road, which we have seen out there. That process is extremely tedious and expensive. So you have a proposal, so for brevity sake, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I would like to just hit some of the high points to kind of make the point. Years ago, we, when we looked at this before the law changed, it just wasn't feasible. It was too costly, it just, it was a nightmare. And I know several of you networked during that process who also wanted to see and get done. It wasn't going to be a bad idea, it was just, it just wasn't feasible. Now that the law changed, it made, it opened up that avenue to allow that to happen. So the proposal, in essence, is to mirror the state statute and allow golf carts to be made street legal, using airport's name, right in line with the state statute, but to have it be done through the city of Satellite Beach, therefore foregoing the requirement to have to go down to the tax office. And I wanted to just give you just a little bit of idea of what that entails so that you really have a good understanding. Just as a little bit of a background, most vehicles are, it's a four-wheel motorized vehicle that has a gross weight of less than 3,000 pounds and a top speed of no more than 25 miles per hour. Currently, the state law allows you, as I said, to make that, to make that vehicle with that qualification, street legal, you must have headlamps, windshield wipers, windshield, mirrors, parking lamps, furnishing, I mean, a litany of things. Seat belts, the whole field. So then what happens is you then have to take your converted golf cart. Then you have to take an original receipt for every single thing that you put on there required by the statute, every single thing I said, not a photocopy, but the original receipt from the place where you had it purchased and installed. Now you have to take that golf cart, you have to trailer it and you have to trailer it to the Motor Services Regional Office in Tidusville and have that vehicle weighed and a certificate of authenticity with its weight that's an original. Then trailer it back. Then you got to trailer it to the place where they expect it, where you give them all the original receipts and a weight inspection and all that. And then trailer it to there and there's at least a one-month waiting, wait minute for that, which is either Orange Park, Orlando, or Tidusville. And that's it. That's, that's all you get. And it's about, like I said, it's a significant wait time for that. So now you have to take your certificate of origin, your bill of sale for the golf cart, the statement from the builder, your Form 8 whatever, which is the affidavit for golf cart by the law of the vehicle, then your original bill of sales for every single part that I mentioned, your weight slip, your application to title, your proof of insurance, your sales tax, and your driver's license identification or passport. They can all go out there to get it done to the state. Then they come out and say, hey, congratulations, and they give you the little license plate and they give you your thing and you pay them the inspection fee or you pay the inspection fee, then you got to pay the $225 registration fee, then you got to pay for the title, then you got to pay for the tax. On top of all the stuff that are taken. So that'll be the, the recommendation, or the history. So the recommendation is to have the city create an ordinance that allows the same requirements except for the windshield wipers, because I still don't see a need for that yet. And I can't, you know, I took that out. I mean, we get some golf cart in the rain anyway, but. So other than that, it, it pretty much mirrors the state requirements as far as the safety and all that. The difference is you can get it all done, you come down here, we look at it and say, turn that leg's out, turn that, yeah, check, okay, looks good. And then we register, you pay a, a, you know, a fee for the, for it to be registered. And then we give you a sticker or a little tag or something. I'm looking right now at what Indian Atlantic does for their beach, to access the beach, you don't have to go through the meters. And that's kind of, that's a, so there's one way or another to get that done. And then you, you get it inspected, you pay the fee, we give you the sticker or the tag or whatever, and you're set. And that's it. So therefore, it, you still are accomplishing the safety with the seat belts and all that that the state statute covers that's already in place. You're just streamlining the ability to get it done. And also, honestly, not that this was derived to be a revenue source, but then the revenue comes here as opposed to, to the state as well. The only difference would be that we would require you to have a driver's license to drive. So I, I just don't, I don't want to see 12 and 13-year-old kids zip around their golf cart, on a golf cart in the streets. My opinion. So that is, in a nutshell, the, the general proposal. And at this point, I would take any questions or direction.
And we would have to create an ordinance and bring that back to you, you know, to, to establish all that. But generally, this is how we would like to, to create that.
I, I personally like it. I kind of want to see a general fee. I mean, I add up all this stuff and I'm going.
We were preparing to do all that.
Right. I just want to make sure that it's simple.
Okay.
And, but, you know, we have them registered. I like your idea about the driver's license part. I want safety. But I also want it to be, you know, I, I'm not looking to lose and not make and I just, I don't want to put out the residents.
We just need to cover our costs.
You know, I mean, I think it's a good idea personally.
I apologize if I just represented that those fees were what you have to pay currently through the state. So that would all be just, you come us into one, one fee, pay it and give you your thing after your inspection, you're out of it.
But not, not at this level. Right. I mean, this level is, that's a state level.
I understand. I just want to make this so we can get.
It doesn't cost us $500 to do a little inspection and give you a sticker.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I have, you know, we just got done listening to budget stuff. So now we're tasking your department with something else with, you know, being able to oversee this because your department's going to oversee it. It's going to be additional time for somebody in your department. Whatever we're looking at as a fee, I want to make sure that that fee is going to cover what your staff time is. I'm not looking at putting us in a situation where we're taking on another responsibility. I'm all in favor of this. I think this is a great alternative to what we had looked at in the past because this isn't the first time this has come before us. I just want to make sure that we're covering whatever his department needs to cover for whatever the fees are in inspections and the renewals and everything.
Other questions from council before I open up?
Chief, out on the Tortoise Island, there's, there's several of these things running around. And I was out walking the dog the other night and one of these things goes flying past me. It was nine o'clock at night, loaded with kids, no lights on. I mean, and finally about three quarters of the way down the road, on came the lights. They were just out. That's my concern. Is there any thoughts as to, from your end, how big of an enforcement problem that's going to be? I can just see one of those things plowing somebody or getting plowed. I mean, that, that's.
Honestly, that's an excellent point. I don't think it's really an enforcement issue because we're, we're already out there, we're already seeing them and we're already having to deal with them anyway. So yes, there'll be more of them, but then that's probably the best cause. So I, I don't think it would be an enforcement problem and there's.
And these kids were all like 12 and 13 years old. I mean, that's the age.
That would not be allowed. And because it would be registered, we would know who that person is. And we could very simply just revoke their, their permit.
Okay.
Say, you know, you got 12, 14 kids driving this thing with no lights and zipping across the highway and whatever. So therefore, we're going to revoke their permit if this continues to be a problem or there's another avenue for citations for traffic infractions, just like you with your car. If you're doing something you're not supposed to do, there's a, we can issue a citation.
I mean, I think that whatever ordinance we come back with, just based on what he says, needs to be pretty tight on the enforcement side, I really do. And a follow-up question, I saw in one of these, one of these things that you've included here, there were streets that were designated golf cart only. So are we going to have all streets open to golf carts or are you just going to have golf cart, street-specific type of thing?
No, I believe it would be any, any street in the city other than A Way and South Patrick. I don't, I don't think we need to have any designation because the requirement would be no faster than 25 miles an hour. And there is no street in the inner city other than A Way and South Patrick that's, that has a speed limit higher than that. So personally, unless the law changes my mind, I don't think we need to, to limit anything or make anything specific. I think it would be citywide. I'll just say A Way and South Patrick, I want to be clear, that doesn't preclude someone from legally driving across the road to get to the other side. You got to go to the beach, check the waves, you can, you can do that in the proper place legally across. You can't just drive it down A Way or South Patrick.
Okay.
And I think if we just kept it simple, you know, where we, all streets in the city that have a speed limit of 25, you know, miles an hour or less would be allowed to have those vehicles on it.
Sounds fair.
So that would just be a declaration that we have an ordinance.
That is, that is the one, yes.
Thank you. Let me open up for public comment at this time on this agenda item. Floor is open. Whoever would like to start?
My name is Toni Gaskin-Stilian and I've been here 41 years. And I coached varsity trailing at Satellite and I teach dance at the DRS Center and I have a golf cart. I've had it for nine months and I haven't been able to use it here because of the reasoning. The stuff on top of that that he didn't quite hit is once you do all that and you get it registered, it then becomes a vehicle like a car. So you have to get it insured for the same amount as your car insurance. So we're talking on budgeting. I have a 16-year-old. I cannot afford to pay his insurance, my husband's, mine, and insurance on my golf cart. Right now, I have $80 a year, which covers my golf cart, anything I hit, but that's because it's not registered. As soon as it's registered, that's going to go up to about 100 a month. So it would save us a lot to be able to do it. And I literally will not have a vehicle because I would rather drive my golf cart all around Satellite Beach because I don't really go anywhere else. So it's going to save us a lot. I can get to Sally High Stadium, I can get to DRS Center. And to be honest with you, my 16-year-old does not want to drive my golf cart, he wants to drive his new truck, you know? Not new, I could pay for half of it. But I don't perceive the kids being a big problem if they are. We have a lot of good parents in this community that would be backing law enforcement and anyone else. Trust me, there's a lot of eyes in Sally Beach and they're ready to jump if they see something like this going on. So I do believe that they would stay under control. And we're not like Vieira, we're not as big, we don't have as much an area to worry about. So I think it's more contained, so it wouldn't be such an issue. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tom.
Please.
I think when you're talking about registration, you're not talking about through the state.
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Please state your name.
I'm Ron Leonard. Off of, I'm in Bimby Drive. Are we speaking of registration through the state or just registered in the city of Satellite? That would drop the requirements for the heavy insurance. When I checked with Allstate and State Farm, it ran about $12 to $18 a month if it's not registered through the state.
Correct. It would be just through the state. It would forego the requirements that not is registered, which would then trigger the insurance issue if you.
Right. But, but we would still want you to carry insurance.
You would have, you still have insurance.
Insurance, correct.
Just not car vehicle level insurance.
Thank you. Floor is still open, please?
Hi, Cindy Berger. I have a different point of view on this because I have a vehicle, a golf cart. I had one that wasn't registered and I was issued a moving violation immediately, the first day. I had it and went through the steps. It took us three weeks to have it. You don't have to trailer it somewhere. That you mentioned, you can go to a moving company and get it weighed. The people from the state took pictures and stated what needed to be submitted. We had the pictures, we had our insurance, we had the weight, we trailered it up, we got our tag. So I understand I have the means to trailer it and do it. So I understand I had the means to trailer it and do it, but I also, so I got a golf cart registered because I wanna use it and not get tickets. I use it accordingly, the lights are a safety issue. I live on a street corner where there are at least three golf carts that zip by a day that don't have plates on them, that kids are driving, so I'm concerned about the enforcement if you make drivability easier, because with the current process with registration, I see plenty of unregistered carts all over town, whether it's at shopping malls, whether it's down at the beach, I'm calling Publix's shopping mall, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good, that's our shopping mall, so. But if I could just comment on that real quick, I think you're seeing that because the process is so arduous. We've, I've had conversations with probably about five different people who did have to trailer their vehicle, their golf cart, to a whole nother location like Titusville or Orange City or whatever that...
Yeah, that's, of course, I've heard of that, because when, the report that I got, the person that called asked the question specifically, is there any other place that I can get this weighed, and they said, no, it's here, we're here. So I, but I didn't make that call, so I don't know if they knew the insurance.
You can get an official weight at a moving company, so all you had to do was go across... But again, I'm saying, all you have to do, it means you have to put the golf cart on trailer and get it somewhere else, so I recognize that that's different, but my concern rests with the enforceability, because, you know, there's a lot happening that they're not following guidelines, and I don't see them being stopped or issued tickets to be made more responsible.
So...
Thank you.
So we would have to, if you see that, it would be good if we know, if you call us, because they can't be everywhere, but, but if you, one of the things that we've noticed in any situation is when you cut the red tape and the, and the, how hard it is and the expense, the likelihood of compliance is so much greater, I mean, it just skyrockets. So that's what we're trying to do, is to make it easier for people. Otherwise, we will have a lot of unregistered golf carts going on, because people, it's very popular now, it's what people wanna drive, and so either we make it easy for them and for them to follow the law, and get registered with the city and so on, and cut the cost, or we're gonna see a lot of noncompliance out there.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Chris Kiesel, I live on Coconut Street. My nieces and nephews call me Uncle Fun, so I'm here about the fun, and these golf carts are fun, and you know that. I'd first like to second Councilman Osmer's motion to annex Piney to Causeway, although they're O'Gally. It's a great idea, great idea. All right, Chief is right about the golf carts, I think a $40 fee for the officer's time to come out, maybe an officer can inspect it at the house, and as far as compliance goes, if some kids are driving a golf cart, the parents should be cited. Write the parents the citation or the registered owner, because, like, I believe there's no bad dogs, only bad owners, so there's no bad kids, only bad parents. If a kid gets a golf cart, where'd they get the keys? So I think you can get some compliance that way, and if you make it stiff enough, first time is a hundred, $200 fine, second time, you revoke it, and then they gotta go get a tag. I'd also like to see if you could extend this to side-by-side vehicles, which are also like golf carts, but souped up for off-road. The state of Florida uses those in Tampa for city enforcement, they use them in Orlando, they're using them in Palm Beach. Now, the state of Florida won't recognize my side-by-side, because it was built as an off-highway vehicle, no HV. Now, can I get around that? Of course I can, because I'm smart enough, and I've read the statutes, and I figured out how to do it. I can take it out of state, get it titled in Tennessee when I'm up there as an LSV, have it governed down, bring it back to Florida, now the title's different, just like a golf cart, and I can get it registered for this. I think it's a wonderful idea that you wanna entertain by giving, by creating an ordinance to allow these on the, on the street without sending the money to Brevard County, but then making it a revenue source for you, because you know there's gonna be a shortfall. So if you do $150, and I will pay it annually, I promise you, as well as everybody else that doesn't have to go get their golf cart titled and tagged and registered and weighed, which you can go to the transfer station, or the landfill, and they'll give you a certified weight, by the way. You can do that, but put that money here, put that money here. The only drawback that I see is I can't go to Walmart.
Gotta work on Indian Harbor.
I know. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to leave the city of Satellite Beach, and I like to check the waves just as much as everybody else, and I got a paddleboard that I hate lugging in my vehicle, and I can throw it up on top of my side-by-side, be right over there. So I think it's a wonderful idea, I'd also like you to consider that as well, because I would bring mine into compliance with the appropriate affidavits of being an LSV, governed to the appropriate speeds, you know, anywhere in the, anywhere in the city. Mine, right now, I've put blinkers on mine, the only thing it's lacking is a horn and a windscreen, which are coming next, but they're very simple to do, I think I have $20 in the blinker system, the brake lights all work, everything works, but I think it's a great idea. I'm about fun, I'm about fun right now, and having golf carts rip through our community, you know, driving around, having, at the Schechter Center, a golf cart drive-in for the kids, imagine that. I mean, Viera, if you see Viera go by the high school there, Viera High School, there's 30 golf carts out there, those kids drive to school. We, I had just talked to a couple people, I'm not gonna say any names, because I don't know if they want me to throw them out there, but we talked about Satellite Beach Golf Club Owners Association, where we do drive-ins, golf cart shows with new wheels, following the fire truck at Christmas in a parade, decked out like the boat parade, trying to generate revenue and being about community, all right? We talked about these cleanups, these hurricane cleanups, all right, and how much it costs the city to do that. Can you imagine an armada of golf carts with dump carts on the back of their stuff, picking up people's debris, taking it to the field and dumping it at one centralized location so our city isn't littered with debris fences and all this yard waste? I mean, I could just see that right now, call to arms. We had Minutemen who volunteered to fight for this country. You get a golf cart armada out there? Christmas lights, mine have, mine have LED lights that flash all over, it looks like a parade, and I don't know if any of you saw me in Founder's Day, because I drove it from Delora all through the neighborhoods in that big Founder's Day parade, with flags everywhere and a bobcat on the very top of my thing. Yeah, I have pictures of it, but the golf carts, I think, are a foregone conclusion. I think that's a no-brainer. But I wanna talk about, again, the SUV, or the side-by-side. Satellite Beach uses a John Deere Gator to go to the parks to go ahead and collect trash. They drive it on the street. What they have on the back of it is a slow-moving farm vehicle placard. Now that also allows myself and this vehicle to drive on city street, as long as it's involved in some kind of agricultural-type deal. They use them along A1A, picking up garbage, you'll see them going over Piney to Causeway. Now those vehicles aren't registered for the roadway either, but they are able, unbeknownst to me, to drive on these streets to do this job. So I have a slow-moving farm vehicle placard on the back of mine. I've never been hassled, but I try not to draw attention to myself or break the law, but again, it's in within, it's in compliance, but it's really kinda cloudy, how we can do this without being governed through an ordinance or governed through a state statute. So, one more, the lifeguards. The lifeguards, I call it whipping down the road from the fire station all the way to the beaches, and then they drive it up and down the beach. So I would never take mine, and I would, I would deter everybody from doing that, because I feel so strongly about our beaches and the degradation of them, I would never allow anybody to do that, but, but I have a video of the lifeguards just strolling down the beach, or strolling down the street through the neighborhood, I don't know if they were going down cinnamon, I don't remember, but I thought, how is it...
They're going to fire, yeah, they go to get gas, that's how it works.
However, I have a trailer, I have to take mine down to Charlie's, because I burn ethanol free. But I also have pictures of the John Deere Gator. This is on DeSoto, so he's, he's the same thing as I am, but he's able to get away with it, and there's no, no enforcement on him, I think it's kinda...
All of ours are registered, I just have to...
How is it, how could it be registered if it's not a street-legal machine? And if it's an OHV, how can that be registered? Because it's not, it doesn't fall into the golf cart, it had no windshield, had no blinkers, had no brake lights, and, 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 listen, I'm not out here to attack what they're doing, what I'm saying is, it's a good idea include all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I was gonna wish for my patrol-ready golf cart, but now it's not a pretty good idea.
Chief, will you guys...
There's certain functions in the city that we are, we are allowed by law to use those vehicles for, and that's maintenance and beach patrols and things like that, so that, that's why we are allowed to have them as, as city workers.
John Fergus, still at 1:35 Maple. I think there's some interesting ideas here beyond what was originally being talked about, different types of vehicles. I might add, there was a comment about not getting to Walmart, it might be interesting to talk to Harbor whether they'd wanna play with this too. You know, if the two cities teamed up, you might actually be able to get to Walmart are pretty close.
Is the council meeting Friday?
I do see...
They always hear about it at some point, and so if they wanna do it, they can do it.
I, I agree that enforcement can be an issue. I've seen some kids doing some pretty dumb things on our streets, and it seems to me a monetary fine may be the first time or something, but number two or three, well, you gotta just pull that authorization to run it on the street and say, that's it, you're done, and it's up to the parents to take care of the problem, doesn't matter who's driving it, whatever, unless they reported it stolen, and then you found somebody, but that's a different issue, that, that I think that needs to be dealt with fairly aggressively, I guess maybe is the way to put it, because I know this would be real tempting for some 13, 14, 15-year-old kid. Hey, I got a driver's license at 15, because I lived on a farm, but I had to be careful too.
Thank you. Any more public comment before I close it?
Sorry, I just have one word, environment, I forgot to say that one.
Okay, thank you.
Just give me the environment.
Appreciate it. Okay, wanna close the public comment?
Chief, I think you have direction from us, if you could look at all the different avenues.
Great.
Except one question.
Tremendous amount of things that we're talking about and concerned will be addressed in the ordinance, and it's stuff, I really haven't heard much tonight that we haven't already talked about and discussed to some degree, so I think it will, it will cover that's enjoying the things that we're concerned.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Chief, logistics-wise, I am going to assume that when someone has everything up to par, that you'll go to them. The reason I bring this up is, obviously, we're trying to get rid of the whole trailer or anything, but if they haven't had it inspected yet, and they don't have a decal yet, if they drive it to the police station, they are already illegal before they get there. So I would have to assume that you would go to them to inspect it, otherwise, you're gonna say, well, if you're on your way to the police department, we'll allow that. I mean, how, how, logistically, how would you take care of that?
And it really wouldn't, I don't perceive the problem either way, it's like when you buy a car on Saturday, and you do the transaction, you gotta take the car home, there's, I just don't see there being a problem with somebody going, I'm on my way, I have all my stuff, get inspected, I'm going to the police department, and it don't need any more time, but it just depends on who's gonna be the one doing it. There's also the possibility that we can come in, and they pick up the application, and say, keep the application with you when you come in, have it with you, so if we stop you, it's not registered, say, here's the application, my appointment's at 2:00. I think there's a lot of ways to do it, because I don't know that I'm gonna make someone pay, we're tied up with something and they're, so it might have to be a staff person that does it, rather than, so we're gonna make sure that we get that worked out anyway, so it's not gonna get caught, people will make it easy for the citizens.
It would probably be easier for an administrative staff person at the police department to conduct the inspection, rather than a patrol officer who's full...
I fully agree with that, I just, you know...
We can, we can work, we can make sure...
It would just be illegal to drive it if you don't have a decal, is what I'm just saying, and I heard all the, the problems with trailer, and we certainly don't want somebody to have to trailer it down to the police department, that kinda defeats the purpose of this, you know?
The third time you stop them is that going to have the fact that we can do...
Obviously, I tend to agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Mark? Hey, Chief, just to kinda follow up, I, two things that I heard set up here tonight, one of which I said, but the other one Dominic said, is I, I think, don't make your fees too small. I mean, you've gotta make sure they, they cover what you do and all the work that goes into it, because it could be, it could mushroom into something fairly significant, but you gotta be able to cover your time.
Honestly, not that I'm suggesting it, but we could make it $10 less than what it costs for the state, and I think people would be okay with it, because it's still the convenience of making it so much easier. I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I'm just, and I'll throw that, and the other one was, that was mine, was the enforcement side, I'm just, and John Fergus just touched on some, but I'm just concerned kids are gonna get into it 13, 12, 10, and I, like I told you, I've seen it out there, and, so those are, those are two things I heard up here, so.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, everyone, we got direction from council. Chief, thank you very much. Audience, thank you very much for participating, I'm sure it will be backed us soon. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, discuss take action on council goals for FY 1819. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. We basically gave you the prior year goals for you to consider, but none of you submitted your goals, and I don't know if you wanna move this to the next meeting, or do you have them in your head that you would like to read, read or read?
Do it at the next meeting, given the hours?
Yes, I think...
Can you send us all those again, too?
Is that fine with everybody? Okay, great. Then moving on to Agenda Item 12, proposed for the next meeting on July 18. If you have any additions to this or would like to see something on it, please get with city manager. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, adoption of minutes. So, I have a motion by Councilman Brimer, second by Councilman Osmer, further discussion? Here in Nonoanor?
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montelar?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Senator Stephen?
Yes. Any further questions, Mark?
And I, we don't have to deal with this tonight, Mr. Mayor, if you don't want, but I, I'm sure council has received the same emails I've seen, I've seen a number of emails come from, from a board that were pretty strongly worded, pretty tough on a lot of people and that sort of thing, and I don't know if this council has any thoughts on how to handle that issue or anything like that, I just, it just doesn't, the comments that I've seen made and the comments that I've heard that were made, were really not the kind of demeanor that we have on our particular boards, and I didn't know if, I, I just wanna bring it out, I'm... Let me tell you what I did on that.
Okay.
Okay, so concerning that, that's why I mentioned under council comments.
Oh, okay.
To direct that to the board. I did have a conversation with the said person, about a half-hour conversation, and my explanation to him was, it didn't matter, it wasn't a function of whether we agreed or disagreed on what the subject was, is that we as a council, as a board, and the people that come forward here, we have to act in a professional way, and I wouldn't take anything else if it continued to happen, then I specifically said to the gentleman, we need to do something, because this is not, we don't want people to be afraid to walk up to the microphone and give a fair statement. I mean, we talked a lot at the meeting the other day, and, you know, even though we agree to disagree, we have a gentleman conversation, and that's what I wanna make sure the podium is through all the boards. So I did call him, I did talk to him.
Okay.
Basically, it's in his court on how he presents himself, so I just thought I'd go that route first, and the other. And that's, I think if you, I appreciate you doing that, if you've done that, I'm good with it, I just, I just wanted to bring it out for our consideration. Yep, that's, I did it the other day, I think yesterday, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, very good, thanks, sir. All right, any further business? Thank you, everybody, for standing late.